Okay, I'm going to call the Newport City Council meeting to order for Monday, March 15th, 2021. It's now 6:35 PM. The meeting is being held remotely. I'm Paul Manette, the mayor. Other council members joining us remotely are Kevin Charbonneau, Melissa Pedersen, John Wilson, and our newly elected member Christopher Vaschon. Others joining us in the city council room is our city manager Laura Dogan, city clerk treasurer James Johnson, and our public works director Tom Bernier. And with that, I want to welcome Congressman Welch this evening. He's going to give us a presentation and gives a brief update on the American Recovery Act. I know for the past year, he has been working very hard for Vermont in Washington. And with that, I will turn it over to you, Congressman Welch.
Well, Mr. Mayor, and all of your colleagues and everybody, I'm absolutely delighted to be here with you. And what I wanted to report on is what the American Recovery Act means for Newport, in Newport City and Newport Town. There's good news and bad news. The good news is it includes funds for your towns and your school. The bad news is you've got a lot of a challenge to figure out how best to spend that for the benefit of the citizens you represent. But just the bottom line, and to know, in the Recovery Act, there's a number of things that are going to help the citizens of Newport. The $1,400 checks, the $300 childcare tax credit that'll be a monthly payment that's really going to help working parents, the additional money to help your small businesses downtown. But one of the big accomplishments from my perspective, and I think even a lot of my Republican colleagues didn't know for, was our inclusion of money that is going to go directly to our municipalities with considerable flexibility so that you can decide how best to utilize those funds for the benefit of the citizens you represent. And all this is obviously subject to rulemaking and all the usual things that don't allow us to be 100% confident. But the bill has been signed by President Biden. And under the bill, as we now have the numbers, Newport City would get $122,46 million. Newport Town would get $865,000. And the North Country Supervisory Union would get $9,970,000. That would come in two tranches. This is for the municipal money and the town money. 50% of that in 90 days, and then the balance in a year. And the money is going to be flexible in that you have until 2024 to spend it. And it can include anything related to COVID, but it's broadly defined. So it could be projects that include water, sewer, and even broadband. The rationale of this money that's going in the Recovery Act to our cities and our towns is that, and especially our cities and towns, that the economic dislocation that's occurred has created a lot of stress in your communities, in all of our communities. And this financial assistance is going to help all of us in all of our towns recover. Bernie Patrick and I all made a very, very strong argument that we should delegate as much authority and decision-making responsibility as possible to the elected officials in the communities. And, you know, that's federalism as a partnership where there are resources the federal government has actively can provide. But the decisions and the wisdom about where, how, and how that can best be utilized for the citizens of a local community is made in the local community by the representatives who've been entrusted with that responsibility. So that's what I wanted to report to you. And I wanted to say thank you as well. You know, this has been incredibly challenging for the state of Vermont and for the country for the past year. And it was only a year ago that we really were going into lockdown. And I remember coming back from Washington around this time a year ago. I was going out to the airport and American Airlines called and said, Congressman Welch, are you still planning on taking the plane to Burlington? And I never get a call about that. And I said, well, yes. What's the why? They said, well, because we're ready to go as soon as you get here. The economy had been closed down, and there was literally nobody on that flight home other than me. And it's usually a crowded flight. But it just shows you what happened a year ago. And of course, now, since then, 500,000 lives have been lost in this country. And we've done really well in Vermont. I credit the governor and our local leaders with that. But we've got a ways to go. We've got to hang in, obviously, keep ourselves healthy and safe, keep ourselves safe. We've got to get the vaccine. And as you know, in the Recovery Act, there's substantial money to make certain that there's vaccine aplenty for everybody in the United States. But the recovery process is going to be one that requires a lot of wisdom at the local level about how best to deploy these funds so that we are stronger and better when we come out of it. In addition to the money that's going to our communities, it's going to be about $200 billion in Vermont that will go to towns and cities. The state is going to get over $1 billion. And some of those state funds can be made as grants for projects at the community level. Those would be administered by the state. But you and Laura on your behalf can make application to the state of Vermont to seek some of those funds for the improvement of the beautiful town that you all represent. So I'll stop there, Mayor. And I just want to again thank you all for hanging in and helping your communities get as far through this as we have. We've got a ways to go. But I think these funds, I hope, will be helpful to you in your effort to make Newport a better city and a better town. Thank you.
Well, thank you for joining us and letting us know the news. And I want to repeat that I really appreciate the effort that you have done. I know you've worked on this for at least the past year, because I know you had sent me a spreadsheet of some of the numbers way back of what you were trying to get accomplished. And I was pleased to see it accomplished because it really will help each and every community in the state, and not only in Vermont, but around the country, to get through this. And it's hard to believe it has been a year since it really all started. And I think people are, I think are beginning to get anxious to have it slowly come to an end. And I know with the vaccine rollout, I know, I think Governor Scott's trying to plan on having things mostly back to normal by July 4th, which is good news.
That'd be great. Arch and that parade.
Yes. Before I let you go, did any council members have any specific questions they would like to ask Congressman?
Melissa, I don't have any questions, but I'd just like to echo a thank you for your work, Congressman Welch, on behalf of all the cities and towns and generally citizenry of Vermont. Thank you.
Well, you're kind. But thank you for the work you do. I really appreciate it. We got to restore people's faith and democracy, you know? We all have that job.
All right.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much for joining us.
And good luck to you. And thanks so much for letting me be a brief part of your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And with that, we will move on to the next item on the agenda for the city council, which is to adopt the Newport City Rules of Procedure for City Council Meetings. For those who joined by video, I am going to share my screen with the rules so that everybody can see it. Okay. All right. Every year, the city council adopts rules of procedure for our city council meetings. And the purpose is the city council of Newport is required by law to conduct its meetings in accordance with the Vermont Open Meeting Law, 1 VSA Sections 310 to 314. Meetings of the City Council of Newport City must be open to the public at all times except as provided in 1 VSA Section 313. Policy sets forth rules, rules of procedure that shall apply to the City Council of Newport City, which is referred to below as the body. These rules shall apply to all regular, special, and emergency meetings of the body. Under organization, the body shall annually elect the president, the mayor of the body, or in the mayor's absence, the president, the president shall preside over all meetings. If both the mayor and the president are absent, a member selected by the body shall act as chair for that meeting. The mayor shall preserve order in the meeting and shall regulate its proceedings by applying these rules and making determinations about all questions of order or procedure. A majority of the members of the body shall constitute a quorum. If a quorum of the members of the body is not present at a meeting, no meeting shall take place. No single member of the body shall have authority to represent or act on behalf of the body unless by majority vote. The body has delegated such authority for a specific matter at a duly noted meeting, and such delegation is recorded in the meeting minutes. Motions made by members of the body do require a second. A motion will only pass if it receives the votes of a majority of the total membership of the body. There is no limit to the number of times a member of the body may speak to a question. A member may speak or make a motion only after being recognized by the mayor. Motions to close a limited debate will be entertained. Any member of the body may request a roll call vote pursuant to 1 VSA Section 312A2. When one or more members attend a meeting electronically, a roll call vote is required for votes that are not unanimous. Meetings may be recessed to a time and a certain place. Number nine, the rules may be amended by a majority of the vote of the body and must be readopted annually. Under D, each regular and special meeting of the body shall have an agenda. Those who wish to be added to the meeting agenda shall contact the city manager to request inclusion on the agenda at least three days prior. The mayor shall determine the final content of the agenda. At least 48 hours prior to a regular meeting and 24 hours prior to a special meeting, a meeting agenda shall be posted in or near the municipal office and at the following designated public places in the municipality: Newport City Municipal Building, Goodrich Memorial Library, and the U.S. Post Office. At least 48 hours prior to a regular meeting and at least 24 hours prior to a special meeting, a meeting agenda shall be posted on the Newport City website, which is http://newportvermont.org. The agenda must also be available to any person who requests such agenda prior to the meeting. All business shall be conducted in the same order as it appears on the notice agenda, except that any addition to or deletion from the notice agenda must be made at first as the first act of business at the meeting. No additions or deletions from the agenda shall be considered once the first act of business at the meeting has commenced. Any other adjustment to the notice agenda, for example, changing the order of business, postponing or tabling actions, may be made by a majority of the vote of the body. Meetings, regular meetings, shall take place on the first and third Monday of the month at 6:30 PM in the council room of the municipal building unless otherwise warned. Special meetings shall be publicly announced 24 hours in advance by giving notice to all members of the body unless previously waived, posting in the municipal clerk's office and at the following designated places in the municipality: Newport City Municipal Building, Goodrich Memorial Library, U.S. Post Office, and posted on the city website, newportvermont.org, and to any person who has requested notice of such meetings. Emergency meetings may be held without public announcement, without posting of notices, and without 24-hour notice to members, provided some public notice thereof is given as soon as possible before any such meeting. Emergency meetings may be held only when necessary to respond to an unforeseen occurrence or condition requiring immediate attention of the public body. A member of the body may attend a regular, special, or emergency meeting by electronic or other means without being physically present at a designated meeting location, so as long as the member identifies him or herself when the meeting is convened, and is able to hear and to be heard throughout the meeting. Whenever one or more members attend electronically, voting that is not unanimous must be done by roll call vote. If a quorum or more of the body attending a meeting, regular, special, or emergency, without being physically present at a designated meeting location, the agenda for the meeting shall designate at least one physical location where a member of the public can attend and participate in the meeting. At least one member of the body, or at least one staff or designee of the body, shall be physically present at each designated meeting location. Public participation. All meetings of the body are meetings in the public, not of the public. Members of the public shall be afforded reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the body during public comment, so as long as order is maintained according to these rules. At the beginning of each agenda or before any action is taken by the public body, there may be as much as 15 minutes afforded for open public comment. By a majority vote, the body may increase the time for open public comment. Comment by the public or members of the body must be addressed, must be addressed to the chair or the body as a whole, and not to any individual member of the body or public. Members of the public must be acknowledged by the mayor before speaking. If a member of the public has already spoken on a topic, he or she may not be recognized again until others first have been given the opportunity to comment. Order and decorum shall be observed, shall be observed by all persons present at the meeting. Neither members of the body nor the members of the public shall delay or interrupt the proceeding or the peace of the meeting or interrupt or disturb any member or speaker. Members of the body and members of the public are prohibited from making personal, impertinent, threatening, or profane remarks. Members of the body and members of the public shall obey the orders of the mayor or other presiding member. The mayor shall adhere to the following process to restore order and decorum of a meeting, but may bypass any or all steps when he or she determines in his or her sole discretion that deviation from the process is warranted. And then the meeting is called to order and remind the members the applicable rules of procedure. Declare a recess or table the issue, adjourn the meeting until a time and date, order law enforcement, and remove a disorderly person from the meeting. And so those are the rules of procedure. They need to be adopted as we have done in the past. And with that, I would open the floor up to council members who have any comments or questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Well, I just, these haven't changed over the years. They're what have been in place previously, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I guess at this time, I would, if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the rules of procedure.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Wilson.
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, I make, I make a motion that we approve the rules of procedure for city council meetings.
A motion has been made by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
I can second.
Oh, go ahead, Kevin.
I heard two at the same time. I heard Kevin first. So it was made by Mr. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Charbonneau. Any discussion on the motion? Then all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. The next item is to approve the minutes of March 1st, 2021. We received copies of them. And at this time, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
A motion made by Mr. Charbonneau. Is there a second?
I can second that.
Made by Mr. Charbonneau, seconded by Mr. Vaschon. Any discussion on the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Wilson.
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, I believe there's one slight sentence missing right at the top when we mount who was here. Normally, you would put a missing councilperson, in which case, we could pin in council president Dan Ross was absent. We do this on other meetings anytime anyone is absent from the council.
Okay, so we can approve the minutes with that minor, that minor adjustment. So Mr. Johnson.
Just go ahead.
Yeah.
And also President Dan Ross was absent.
Right. Any other comments on minutes or discussion? Then all those in favor of approving the March 1st minutes, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. The next item is to approve the annual meeting minutes from March 2nd. We have copies of those. At this time, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the March 2nd annual meeting as written.
A motion's been made by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Kevin Charbonneau, I'll second.
Made by Mr. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Charbonneau. Any discussion on the March 2nd meeting minutes? Then all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. The next item, number five, is comments by members of the public. If there are no comments by members of the public, we will move on. The next item is election of city council president.
Mr. Mayor, this is Kevin Charbonneau.
Mr. Charbonneau?
I'll nominate Melissa Pedersen.
Mr. Charbonneau was nominated Melissa Pedersen?
I second that.
There is a nomination and a second. For Melissa Pedersen. Are there any other nominations? If not, then all those in favor of Melissa Pedersen as president of the council, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
I'll abstain.
Okay. So we have, just go through it. I'm going to, so Mr. Charbonneau, you were a yes?
That is correct.
Okay. Ms. Pedersen, it was, okay.
That was a yes?
Yes. Mr. Wilson said he was out of the session, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Vaschon was a yes?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. So Melissa Pedersen is now the city council president.
Thank you.
Moving on, moving on, the next item is authorization to sign warrants, 24 VSA Section And in the past, this, can everybody hear me with my clock going? I just wanted to make sure with my clock chiming. Okay, this usually, it has been the mayor and the president of the council to go in and sign the warrants. And so that is what has been done in the past. So we would need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, this is Kevin Charbonneau.
Go ahead.
I'll make, I'll make the motion that the city clerk and the mayor are authorized to sign warrants in accordance with Title 24, Section 1623A1.
Actually, it's got to be a member of the council, Mr. Charbonneau. So it would have to be myself and one other member of the council. Because we're the ones that approved the warrants, just to, just to have a clarification.
I, I thought the, the city clerk approved the warrants.
Nope, the city council, we have to go through, basically what's been happening is you've authorized myself and a backup in case I haven't been there to go in, review all of the bills and the check, you know, and check everything. And then I've been signing it. And then basically, it's the city clerk and I believe, you can correct me, but I believe it also has to be one of his assistants. They both sign the actual checks going to the vendors. But we, as a council, have to approve the expenditures.
Okay. I will withdraw my motion then.
Okay. And so it basically, it usually is the mayor and the president of the council.
Aye. Mr. Mayor, I will make that motion that the mayor and the president of the council, Melissa Pedersen, are authorized to sign the warrants in accordance with Title 24, Section 623A1.
Motion is made by Mr. Charbonneau. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Wilson.
Made by Mr. Charbonneau, seconded by Mr. Wilson. Discussion? There are no discussion, then all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Moving on, the next item is the city government appointees. And the first item is the Cemetery Commission. We received a memo from Mr. Shinet. And basically, the appointment for the Cemetery Commission, we've had Gene Condon step forward to replace Frank Ormsby, who could no longer serve as a member of the Cemetery, East Main Street Cemetery Commission. And so it would be, the motion would be to appoint Dennis Shinet, Gene Condon, and John Wood, Sr., to the East Main Street Cemetery Commission.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Wilson, I'll make that motion.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second, Melissa.
I heard Chris, I heard Mr. Wilson make the motion and Mr. Vaschon seconded the motion. Discussion on that motion? Then all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. The next item would be Recreation Committee. And it looks like we have two people up for reappointment, Jamie Contour and Debbie Smith. And they would, they recommend reappointing them to a two-year term, ending And they would, the recreation, they recommend reappointing them to a two-year term ending in two thousand and twenty-three.
Mr. Mayor?
A motion's been made by Mr. Vashon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Made by Mr. Vashon, seconded by Mr. Charbonneau. It would be to appoint Jamie Contour and Debbie Smith to a two-year term ending in two thousand and twenty-three. Any discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. The next item is the planning commission and historic preservation commission. And the recommendation is to reappoint both John Manette and Amanda Shapert, um, to the planning commission, and that would be till two thousand and twenty-four. That would also be for the historic preservation commission.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that, uh, motion that we appoint John Manette and Amanda Shapert.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Wilson.
Motion made by Mr. Charbonneau. I heard Ms. Patterson second. Uh, so, motion made and seconded. Discussion on that, on the motion? Then all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. The next one is the development review board. And it's John Holliver who is up, and he would be appointed to a three-year term, which would expire in two thousand and twenty-four, and we would need a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, this is Melissa, I'll move to appoint John Holliver to the development review board for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-four term.
A motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Made by Ms. Patterson, seconded by Mr. Vashon. Discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppo- opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, um, one item that we forgot for an appointment on the agenda, which I just realized as I was reading, is we need to, the harbor commission. Um, we have planning and historic development review, we need the harbor commission. And we had, and we had four people whose term ended in two thousand and twenty-one that would need to be reappointed. Steve Edgely, James Johnson, Tom Latta, and John Manette. They would be, need to be reappointed for a two-year term.
So moved, Mr. Mayor?
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Made by Mr. Vashon, seconded by Mr. Charbonneau. I'll open up for discussion. Then all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Okay. The next one is health officer, and we would need a motion to, uh, reappoint the health officer, which is currently John Holliver. And we would need a, a motion for his reappointment.
Mr. Mayor, this is Kevin Charbonneau, I'll make that motion.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second, Melissa.
Made by Mr. Charbonneau, seconded by Ms. Patterson. Discussion on the health officer? Then all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. The next one is the tree warden, and that is currently, uh, held by Robert Goslin. And we would need a motion, uh, to reappoint, uh, Robert Goslin as the tree warden.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion made by Mr. Charbonneau. Uh, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Vashon. Discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. The next appointment, uh, the representatives to the, uh, NVDA board is currently, uh, the city manager Laura Dogan and myself.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Vashon, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Patterson. Any discussion?
This is so crooked.
Let's continue on, Mr. Mayor, if we may.
Then any discussion from council members? Are any discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. The next item is to approve the representative to the NVDD board, which is the Northern Vermont Economic Development District, and that is usually held by the mayor. And so we would need a motion for that.
This is Kevin Charbonneau, I'll make that motion.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Made by Mr. Charbonneau, seconded by Ms. Patterson. Discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. The next appointment is building safety officer, and that's currently held by the fire chief, John Holliver. And we would need a motion on that.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Vashon, is there a second?
I'll second.
Made by Mr. Vashon, seconded by Mr. Charbonneau. Discussion on the motion? Then all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion, ayes have it, motion carries. All right, we will move on to the next item on the agenda. I gotta find my, okay, we have a resignation from the planning commission. The city council received the letter. Um, it's from, uh, Mr. Vashon. Says, "Dear John, I write a note, notify you that I will be resigning from my position on the planning commission of Newport. I've enjoyed being on the commission and believe it is headed in the positive direction for the city. I would like to continue to support the trends, support the commission as I transition to my new role. I'm appreciative of the experience and new knowledge that the opportunity has brought me. Chris Vashon." And basically, per state statute, um, you cannot, you, it's, it's, uh, you cannot be a voting member of the planning commission if you're an elected member of the city council. And so we would need a, a motion to, uh, accept the resignation.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Wilson, I move that we accept the resignation of, uh, Mr. Vashon from the planning commission.
Made by Miss, a motion made by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Seconded by, uh, Ms. Patterson. Discussion on the motion? Then all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is the rural business development grant, um, RBDG. Um, it's a grant that, um, Jessica Booth, and, and recreation director, is working with Mike Welch on applying for. Um, and with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jessica to see if she would like to make some comments on the grant. It's for improvements at the city dock, um, aquatic nuisance management. As we all know, we've had weed issues at the dock, parking improvements, um, and things like that. So I'm gonna let Jess kind of give a brief overview of the grant she's applying for.
All right, thanks, everybody. Um, so, yep, this is a rural, a rural business development grant. Um, these funds are typically used to help either businesses or organizations bring, um, additional commerce opportunities to restaurants, stores, things like that. So we sort of looked at this grant as a way to, um, make some improvements down at the marina uh, during the non-COVID year, especially the marina is sort of the gateway into, into the town, um, by water. So we see a lot of Canadian visitors that come down, uh, from Canada. They dock up at the marina, they stop and get fuel, and then they disembark and walk up on Main Street to have lunch in the restaurants or visit, um, our downtown. So we're sort of doing this grant application, uh, with three different projects. And you saw them outlined in your memo and saw some images, um, of those too. Uh, but, but the first grant, um, but the first project is, um, making boat access, um, down through the channel a little bit easier and more intuitive. So I worked with the harbor master to come up with some ideas for channel markers down through the, the bay and kind of help boater, guide boaters down into the bay to dock up. Uh, this would include marking off hazardous areas that have known to be sort of troublesome spots by boaters that don't know the lay of the land down on Oxide. Um, also adding some no wake buoys around the mooring field so that, um, you know, the boats that are in our mooring fields aren't getting waked out, and, um, same thing with the slips too, um, just to slow the boat traffic down and making it a little bit easier to approach the dock. Um, and then the next, um, project that we had listed was, uh, working again towards our aquatic nuisance management. So you know that we are planning on, um, purchasing valve barriers, which obviously helps the boats, uh, get in and out of the marina with a, a lot less stress, um, not worrying about having problems navigating and getting in and out. Obviously, if it's really tough to get your boat in and out, you might be less inclined to stop at the dock, um, and make a day out of it. And then the last piece is, um, Eric is forever trying to figure out the parking down there. To the left of the boat launch, there's sort of a big gravel parking area at this point, and there's no structured lines there. So he's constantly finding that boat trailers and vehicles are parking sort of here, there, and everywhere, which makes it so that we obviously can fit less vehicles in there. But they're also parking on the grass and sometimes in the railroad right of way, which can cause some friction between the railroad, um, when they come, they come in and they have a hard time, um, with the train coming through. And then Eric's sort of had earful on a few different occasions. So the mayor has an image up on the screen here, um, where you can see sort of the black dots up top. Those are no wake buoys. Um, and then the green and red are channel markers. There is some, some more images that are panned out a little higher. There's more of those green and red buoys, um, up, up in the upper part of the lake a little bit more. But I wanted to show you this image because it shows the parking area to the left there. Um, so we essentially be paving all of that. We did check with the state to see if that was an acceptable thing to do that close to the lake, and they said that given the fact that the, the parking lot is already a packed gravel, it's already a non-permeable surface, so we don't have to worry about the permitting issues there for that. Um, which you can see there'll be ten, it's kind of tough to see because it's a little small, um, but you did have a larger image in your packet there. But it would add ten oversized parking spots, and those were specifically for, uh, trucks or vehicles that have boat trailers on the back of them, which is typically what we see parking over there. And then six additional car parking spaces as well. And then you can see that there's some nice traffic floor that would kind of loop it around and, and just clean it up a lot, give it a more polished look. Uh, Elizabeth Howell, who did these drawings for us, also threw in a little landscaping bed in there. Um, and then I've spoken with MWA two and told them that we might like to have, um, meeting with them and try to figure out what types of native species and plants that we could, you know, put in there for landscaping that would make a nice addition to help clean that up a little bit. So again, the whole idea here is that the waterfront downtown master plan, you know, encourages us to, to build on those connections that are gonna get, um, people from the waterfront and up into the downtown and vice versa, sort of making those a little bit more welcoming and, and easier, uh, more user-friendly. So this is kind of, um, our version of that, and that's what we're, we're hoping to put through with this grant. Um, there was some numbers in the, uh, grant resolution. You can see that this grant does not require a match, although I've, I've worked with Tom, this is as well, and he's given me some numbers, some things that we can plan on the city contributing as far as man hours and equipment that will help make our grant application a little bit more robust. So all said and done, um, it looks like the total project cost will be, uh, a hundred and seventeen thousand, a little bit, little bit more than that, um, but what we asked for the grant would be ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two, uh, eighty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. So we'd be giving about seventeen thousand, four hundred and seventy through in-kind work and equipment. I think I got pretty much everything. If I missed anything, Mike, don't be afraid to pop in and add on to that. And I certainly am happy to entertain any questions if anyone's got any.
Any questions from council members? Mike, do you have anything you wish to add?
I really don't, Mr. Mayor. Jessica has always did an exceptional job, and, uh, Tom's work and Laura's work in putting us together has, uh, been great, and I look forward to helping him submit the grant application and hopefully it gets approved.
If it is approved, when is the notification?
I think so July, Mike. Yep.
That's right. Typically, they make the decisions in June, uh, and re-agreements go out usually in July, and then you've got like a year to complete the project.
Yeah, and I, I spoke with Tom too, uh, we were looking at the timeline for this, and obviously we know Tom's play is pretty busy, uh, for this summer with the path and the playground. So he said that, you know, you, the ability to be able to do this project either in the fall, when they've slowed down in their other areas, or even next spring is, it would be the best timeframe for him. So the fact that we have a year to use it if we get it is a plus for us.
Okay, good.
Jess, this is, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I can ask a question?
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
I'm just curious, would this parking be available in the winter months, like when events are happening at the gateway? Would it be kept cloud for parking?
I take my question, uh, there is always seem to be a crunch for parking, and people tend to use sort of that upper parking lot. But if and when we're able to host weddings and our father-daughter dances, again, that might, it might be an asset. Um, so we'd have to ask Tom about his capacity to keep that cloud if and when we have events, but that's a good idea.
I just want to confirm and answer the question. Uh, the area is cloud now, so it is normally cloud during the winter time. Thank you.
Other questions?
I, I was just thinking that with lines, it would probably make parking better. So, okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Mr. Vashon. You popped up on my screen. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I noticed there's a, a white buffer between the railroad tracks and the, the pavement itself. I was wondering if that's additions or just the buffer zone that's already there?
That's the, the buffer zone that's already there. Uh, there's no markings on it right now because it's in the gravel, but that's where we constantly have vehicles that park right up against that railroad track. And that's where Eric is, that's where he gets to have his earful from the railroad when they roll through and see vehicles parked that close. They're, that's their right of way, so we really aren't supposed to have trap, you know, vehicles there. We've tried putting railroad ties and some other things, but I think it's gonna take a combination of a few different things, one of which would be marking it off, um, with paint if possible.
Yeah, I remember hearing lots of stories from my dad who worked on the railroad about how many cars had been hit there, so I think this is a good thing.
Yeah, I, I know. I, when I had my boat at the dock, I saw some pretty close calls between the train going through and, and boat trailers parked right next to the railroad track. And so it's been some pretty close calls that I, that I saw. So this is a great idea to coordinate, and most marinas have, um, designated spots for, uh, people with boat trailers, and it's well-marked, so it helps organize the parking. So this is a great idea. Other questions? If, if not, then I would entertain a motion- If, if not, then I would entertain a motion to approve the grant application.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion that we approve that grant application.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I can second.
Made by Mr. Charbonneau, seconded by Mr. Vaschan to approve the grant resolution. There is a resolution that we will all have to pop into the clerk's office this week to sign. And so, any discussion, other discussion on the motion? Then all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Jess, thank you, Mike.
Thanks, everybody.
The next item on the agenda is the Five-Year Capital Improvement Program Presentation. This is the meeting where the five-year capital investment plan is presented to the council. It's just the document is turned over to us for our review. And then we have, I'm gonna let the City Manager address all the details. But I know we will have to have two public meetings on the, public hearings on that five-year capital investment plan. So with that, I'm gonna let the City Manager speak to it.
Thank you, and you are correct. So tonight is the, the first night that we handed over to the City Council. And they have an opportunity to review it and give us feedback. And tomorrow night, it is on the Planning Commission agenda as well. So they too will have an opportunity to review it and give us feedback. And we are required to hold two public hearings on this. And you can see on the cover page, not less than 30, no more than 120 days after a proposed plan is submitted to the legislative body. And that is what we're doing here tonight, is submitting it to the legislative body. And there is an opportunity for Planning Commission response. And they meet the Tuesday after City Council meeting. So they'll have an opportunity to have it presented and then give feedback on it at their next meeting scheduled in early April. So the next time that we would be able to have the hearing number one would be April 19th, if the council chose that to be an appropriate date. And then the second hearing could be May 3rd, if the council chose that to be an appropriate date. After those two hearings, you're allowed to approve it. And this becomes our working document for our next budget. One of the goals that we have is to have this in place before the next fiscal year starts, since that coincides with year one of the five-year plan. Council has an opportunity to make changes to it, to give us feedback. We would like that. And hopefully, they'll be ready to do that at the next meeting. Because once the legislative body makes a change, you have to have at least 15 days' time in order to have the hearing. So I just want to keep the lines of communication open in case you see something. And we can keep our finger on the, the pulse of the timing to have this approved well over in this particular fiscal year.
Other questions for the City Manager, from members of the council? Okay, so basically, it's in our hands to start to, start going over it with a fine-tooth comb. And then, would it be best to send questions to you?
Absolutely, send questions. And then we can have it on the next agenda to answer the questions. Because if council members have questions, it's likely that members from the public have it. This is on our website. And there's a hard copy in the City Clerk's office as well. So folks who want to see it, I check our website first while we're going through the Work Safe and Stay Safe protocols.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll move on. The next item on the agenda is new business. I do not have any new business. Mr. Charbonneau?
I do not have any.
Ms. Pedersen? Nope, okay, Mr. Wilson?
No new business.
Mr. Vaschan?
None for me.
Okay, Ms. Dogan?
No, thank you.
Mr. Johnson, have anything?
No.
Nope, okay. Then we will move on to old business. I don't have any. Mr. Charbonneau?
Not for me.
Ms. Pedersen?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Vaschan?
None for me.
None for you, okay. Ms. Dogan?
No, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Okay. And with that, we do need an executive session. It's the discussion of securing a real estate purchase or lease option, 1 BSA 313A2. And we need a motion.
I'd love to go into executive session to discuss negotiating or securing a real estate purchase or leave option 1 BSA 313, sorry, A2.
Motion was made, is, by Ms. Pedersen, is there a second?
I can second.
Seconded by Mr. Vaschan, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, we are going in executive session. I will put everybody on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is Joseph Gresser. I was wondering, do you expect to have a decision this evening?
I don't believe we will. No, I don't believe we're gonna have a decision tonight.
Thank you.
Okay.
This line is now on hold. This line is now off hold.
Okay, we are now back from executive session. There is no action being taken. The next item is to set the next meeting date, which will be Monday, April 5th, 2021, at 6:30 PM. And now we need a motion to adjourn at 7:41 PM.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Charbonneau, is there a second?
I can second.
Made by Mr. Charbonneau, seconded by Mr. Vaschan. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, we are adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Goodbye.